I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please stand for the invocation. We have the approval of the agenda. There is one item that needs to be added under the mayor. It would be A1 or AI and just listed as proclamation. Do I have approval of the agenda with that amendment?
Second.
Councilman Protem J.C. Trippett made the motion. Councilman McGowan made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We have the minutes of the regular town council meeting of December the 19th.
Make a motion. We approve the regular minutes for the December 19th meeting.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have the approval of the minutes for the special meeting on December the 29th. Councilman Protem, Mayor Protem Trippett made the motion. Councilman Dobbin, Carolyn, I couldn't remember your last name, made the second. All in favor? Let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. We have some public hearings before us and before we get started, I want to set up some parameters so that we'll all be on the same page. When we call the public hearing, we're going to let the zoning officer, Ms. Odom come forward and state what the public hearing is for. And then anybody from the developer or whatever come forward and make their comments. And then if anyone from the public come forward. So that way, some of your questions may be answered before you ask them. Okay, we are opening the public hearing for the ordinance to rezone the property located at 366 Palatine Road. If anyone does want to comment, you need to come, sign in, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Wendy? Okay, okay. No limit on time. I'm sorry. Thank you. That's open form.
Good evening. This is 366 Palatine Road. It is directly across Palatine Road from the entrance to Antler Drive. Currently, there's a mobile home on this property. It is on SFR 3. And they are requesting that it be changed over to multi-use, mixed use, I'm sorry, mixed use with conditional zoning. In your packet, you have the conditions that they have proposed, which is what they have spoken with the planning board about. And the planning board agreed to it, but also sent it to you with those conditions. You have the authority to change those conditions, to add to those conditions. I do have the developer, representative of the developer here tonight. If there's questions that I can't answer, he'll answer the best that he can. The conditions that they put on it, just to help you a little bit, is for an HOA to be established for the maintenance of our open areas and stormwater facilities, for water and sewer to be supplied by the county, for the town homes to face Palatine Road with the driveway and parking in the rear of the facility of the building. No fence is referenced on the site plan, but instead use a vegetative buffer in between that property and the property behind it on Parker Street. Yes, sir.
While we're on the topic of the buffer, what size is the developer saying?
I think that buffer got dropped to 12 and a half feet. Think it was 12 and a half feet.
Right. Thank you.
They've asked for no parking signs next to the road and in between the driveways. It was also suggested that I check with the adjacent property owner to see what his preference is on a buffer, whether he would prefer the vegetative buffer or the fence. And this rezone is consistent with the town's adoptive comprehensive land use and master plan, as well as the future land use map and the town's unified development ordinance. And it's reasonable and meets all the criteria of all of those items.
I would just add it on that point to make that, to not make that a condition, as it's not a condition of the rezone, but just make that a part of the motion, if the motion is to approve.
You understand, Wendy?
Wendy, I have another question regarding the buffer. What was the response of the adjacent property owner?
I have not contacted that property owner yet. I was waiting to see the pleasure of the council on that.
Well, I've read, I've read through it. We can do that when we're retired. We have time. And I didn't see anything that stuck in my mind. And if you guys don't see anything, I'm assuming somebody else has read it. I'd like to go forward.
Wait.
But we can't go forward with that. We gotta hear the others. Okay, that's fine.
We need to hear from the developer.
Is the adjacent property owner here tonight, by the way?
No, not to my knowledge. Matthew Cop.
Anybody here to speak for that owner? Okay.
Is there any, is there anybody?
There is a gentleman here representing the developer. He's having a hard time with speech tonight.
Okay.
He will answer any questions that you have. He's not sure you could understand him very well, but if you need him, he will come forward.
Okay.
What's the, what's the square footage on these townhomes? I looked and I thought I saw it when I was reading it.
Doesn't match.
But I can't find it now. It might not, I might not have read it on this.
In that chart?
It's not a plot.
No, I don't see it.
I don't see anything.
If, if I'm reading this correctly, um,
Yeah.
Good lord, I need a magnus. 1,100 square feet, if I'm reading this correctly.
It's two-story, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it gonna be concrete drive?
Yes.
So.
And the impervious, they will have to have stormwater measures in place?
Will it be sidewalks?
1,256 square feet per unit. It will be, um, it will be a paved driveway.
And that's, that's 1,250. That's living space, not including the garage, correct?
Right. No. I don't know. Maybe included that garage. The, do these have?
That's, that's okay. Don't.
Okay. I think that's total square foot, including the garages, if I remember correctly.
Will there be sidewalks?
Wendy, I have.
There will have to be sidewalks next to Palatine Road, yes, to tie that into everything else going down Palatine.
I have a question.
Okay.
The map that we have shows the units facing the back, not facing Power Tan. Isn't that right?
What the developer had recommended was everything will be back loading. He's gonna make what would be the back of the units look just like the front of the units. So it's gonna look like you're looking at the front of the building from Palatine, but everything will be loading from the back to keep the traffic off of Palatine and on Parker Street. And no parking signs on this side.
Okay.
Probably patio. Patio and sorger. Okay. Okay. Okay.
He can't, he can't talk. Wait.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I have another question.
Okay.
This draw. This drawing that we have looks like that the units are facing that driveway coming in. But it looks like it also shows a trash bin or something at the back that will be facing Palatine Road. This was the problem I had with this from the beginning. You don't want to go down Palatine Road and see trash cans sitting beside the road.
Are you talking about what's at the, at the back on the paved part? Because that's a mail kiosk all the way down at the end.
That's all mail kiosk.
Yes, ma'am.
Not their trash cans and all that kind of stuff.
No. That is mail kiosk.
So where is their trash bins?
Will each unit have separate trash can? He said they would have separate trash cans.
Okay. So that is just their mail kiosk.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. That's not what it's like.
Total. Mm-hmm. Yes, ma'am. And part of that will have to be stormwater pond. And there will be a fence around that stormwater pond.
There's, okay, is, is there anyone else have any more questions? Is there anyone else here that wants to speak on this rezone? Do y'all have any more questions? Okay, what is the pleasure of council? Do we have? Okay, close the public hearing. And now what is the pleasure of council?
Council, do we have to read the entire? Okay. All right, I make a move. We, okay, go ahead.
That entire stretch back there is 24 feet. But now, if council would like, the council can require a turnaround back there if they would like one, as long as the developer is in agreement with that. Mr. Chandler? Okay, with adding a turnaround down here for emergency vehicles and just moving the mail kiosk back.
So I don't know if we actually have enough room without having to redesign some of that and move it. I mean, it could probably be moved down, but you know, that, you know, we can probably add a T-head down there for everything, but maybe a five-foot maybe should be for it. But your regular emergency vehicles such as anti-antis and five policemen and stuff like that would be able to turn around and regular hammerhead turnaround, which we could probably add. To keep them invading into the actual buffer, we may have to make it kind of run tight. Or either instead of it being a T-head, it has to be like that.
We could bring it out.
But we could provide a turnaround. I just can't tell you if we can make it be enough to turn around a little bit faster. But we can make the turnaround for emergency vehicles. I don't think there's enough.
No.
Well, it would have to be a offset quarter sack.
And they bring it out here?
It would have to be an offset quarter sack, but I can check into that.
I can work with them on that. So we need either an offset quarter sack or a regular quarter sack with the 100-foot diameter like we have for all of our other quarter sacks.
Just something so that.
I mean, you, you tell me what you want and we'll. Okay. I'll make sure that gets added to the plans.
And when is the last, I've known PFT, which is not far out, but you know, they have a relation to how long the street is. As they're laying out if fires, they turn around and that, and it should probably be sure than that recognition of that.
That's true, but the town also has our regs.
There ain't no problem.
And we just want to make sure emergency people can get to where they need to be.
Right. May not be.
Okay, so Randy, your question's been answered. Okay. What is?
All right, Madam Mayor, I make a proposal. I move that we that we, that we approve the request for rezoning for 366 Palatine Road with the approval of all the conditions as stated, to include conditions for the fire department as stated.
Would you please read number G as part of your motion?
And also that this rezone is consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive land use and master plan, as well as the future land use map and the town's unified development ordinance. This rezone is responsible and it meets all the criteria of these items.
Now, Mr. Councilman McGowan made the motion. J.C. made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. I opened the public hearing for ordinance to rezone partial 17J 070136 on Wilson Mills Road. Anyone wishing to come forward, be sure to sign in.
13C, like Charlie.
Oh, 13C. I'm sorry. What did I say?
Okay, this one would be going from agriculture to C70, which is commercial. It would be facing Wilson's Mills Road. Also visible from US 70 slash Interstate 42. It's a general rezone, so they have not given any ideas of what they're putting there. I can't push for that at this point. This one is in sync with the comprehensive land use plan, the future land use map. And it is also reasonable because in our strategic plan, more commercial is one of the things the council had wished for. There are findings of facts in here. I'm hoping everyone has read through those. And you have a copy of the future land use map as well. I do have the developer and new owner here, if anyone has any questions or if they would like to address the, if they would like to address the council.
Red says he doesn't want to comment.
Um. All right, so, so tell me under C70, what can be? Since we don't know what will be, what can be?
C70 is anything commercial.
Well, that could be a steel factory. I mean, that could be, I mean.
No, that's industrial.
That's industrial.
Like I said, it can't be a steel factory. I mean.
Business, it can be businesses. It can be a combination of business and warehouse use. It can be storage units, um, retail, anything commercial.
And the developer is willing to work with us on what we put there. He's already talked to Wendy and I, so. He's not gonna put something that he knows we don't want there.
Do we have, do we have a timeframe when we may know what, what we're looking at or, I mean?
This, this is just a rezone. I mean, it's not, it's not that we're going to.
I know, but once I cast a vote, rezone, then I'm limited. Until I cast a vote, until I cast this vote, this is agriculture residential, am I correct? So.
You do know where the property is?
I do.
Okay.
But the thing is, with this general rezone, I can't nail my developer down to what they want to put on it. If it's a conditional rezone, they have to tell me what they want to do so that I can pass that information along. For a general rezone, when it's rezoned, we're giving them permission to put anything listed in that C70 category.
That's right. And that's the reason that I asked the question.
I apologize for not having a list of those for you next time I know to do that. But it is anything commercial or retail that can go in there.
Council, I'm David Ohringer at 3508 Queen Anne Drive in Clayton, and I am one of the owners on the property. Just to give you an idea of what we're thinking. So it's a 52-acre site and there's about 3,000 feet, you know, on 70 Highway right there. And our plan is to go in there and to divide it and have a storage facility on a portion of it, and then really have six or eight, depending on how it all breaks down, flex buildings. Where you would have, you know, if an electrician wanted a place with a warehouse, an office in the front and a warehouse in the back, you know, any of those types of uses, whether it's a retail, a brewery, or a retail fire extinguisher, uh, a company that, you know, does that type of light industrial or commercial stuff. That's the idea, is to have those types of pretty nice-looking buildings that would provide places for folks to work, places for folks to work out of. That's what we're thinking. And you know, the C70 zoning, we went with that just because it does open you up to those types of commercial uses versus like a mixed-use zoning, which was very heavy on the residential side. And that's not what we were anticipating.
Good. I'm probably showing my rear end here, but could you please enlighten me as to, if you don't know what's going to go in there, then why are we rezoning at this point in time? Why, I'm just wondering why we, why you aren't waiting until you know what you want to do with it?
Well, I do. We do know what we want to do with it. We want to build, like I said, six or ever how many rezoning commercial flex buildings. That would be like a 20,000-square-foot buildings that would have individual space, flex space available. So we would have properties for lease is what we would be doing.
Does this, does this go back to what Wendy was talking about and that is conditional rezoning? No?
No.
When you know what?
This is general.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I said, enlighten me.
If I understand it correctly, they're gonna build the buildings. And then they're gonna lease the buildings out.
That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, like I said, I just needed to be enlightened on that. That's all. Thank you.
Yep.
My only concern would be like if you, if you do these and then all of a sudden, you know, five years down the road, it turns into, to, to just a big heap of storage stuff in, inside one of those buildings. You know, it, and I'm, and I don't know the, the amount of land that we have for commercial, for infrastructure that I've been so hard on for, ever since I've been on this council. I call infrastructure. I'm talking about people, infrastructure, grocery stores and pharmacies and stuff that, that, that we everyday town folks. Huh?
Commercial.
That, that's, that's my concern. Just a quick clarification, because it's been asked a little bit here tonight. When there's a general rezone, it is, even when you have a specific project in mind, a developer has a specific project in mind, the rezone is for any use within the district that's allowed within the district. And even if they later decide to build something other than what they indicated on their plans, on their proposal, they can still do that as a property owner in that district according to the zoning that you've, you've rezoned it to. It's only when there's a conditional use that, or mixed use, that it can be tied to specific conditions of what you build. And then those have to be where the developer agrees to that. So the town council is, is in this way, a little bit limited to deciding either on a binary question, whether to rezone or not, based on what those allowable uses are. And sometimes you can have a good idea of what might, might be built, but it, there's no guarantees as to that.
Are we gonna have the pleasure of hearing from adjacent property owners at all later? There are none here. Are there any folks here to speak for adjacent property owners?
No. They own the property, not adjacent. Okay, we're gonna close this public hearing. And what is the pleasure of council?
I make a motion. We approve the property rezone of the 1.07 acres located at 366 Palatine Road from single-family residential to height. No, that's the wrong one. Is that the right one?
No.
No, to mixed-use conditional rezone?
No.
I'm on the wrong one? How many do we have tonight? Which one is it?
Marshall.
You want me to do?
You go right ahead, Jason.
I make a motion that we approve the conditional rezone from agriculture to C70. I believe that's the one we're working on.
It's not, it's, it's general.
I didn't say conditional. I said rezone from agriculture to C70 commercial, to what it says right here. No.
Approval with the condition that this rezone is consistent with the town's about the comprehension land use and master plan as well as the future land use map and the town unified development ordinance. This reason is reasonable and meets all the criteria of these.
Again, just a matter of semantics, I think, but that's not a condition. That's that's the governing board's judgment as to is rezoning.
Okay. Jase. Jase made the motion to approve the rezoning of the parcel on Wilson Mills Road. Carolyn Dobbin made the second, all in favor, let it be known, the same eye. All opposed. That one passed. Okay. I opened the public hearing for the rezoning of property on Waterview Wade and Marlin Lane.
This property is in Johnston Farms. This property is in Johnston Farm. It's all the way down at the end of Marlin Lane at the intersection of Marlin and Waterview Way. The developer is proposing rezone from SFR three, which is single family residential to mixed use conditional zoning to put town homes down around the pond that's at the end of Marlin Lane. Um. Part of the conditions are that the planning board and the developer discussed. Any parts of this that are not already annexed would have to be annexed into the town. And there are the way that line is cut, that would have to be done. Um. On the original plans, there was a four foot strip of land shown on the site plan between the road and the town homes. And they asked that that be removed and that driveways go straight from Waterview or Marlin up to the town homes as a safety feature. Parking for overflow needed to be revised, and I'm still waiting for that revision, but they did not have enough parking for overflow traffic coming through there. Inspection of all streets before new construction begins and once it's completed and shared cost of road improvements proportionately between the town and the developer. And revise the plans or drawing for the development compliance officer to send to our consulting agency for review of driveways and parking areas. I just received that revision today. I have not had a chance to send it to my consultant. But what is on the revised plans is what the consultant had asked for. And I have a copy of that for y'all.
You're talking about the planning consultant? Okay.
This drawing took out the four foot planner and made the driveways go directly into and up to the town homes. The developer is here tonight to answer any questions. If y'all have any questions for him.
My first question is going to be the same question that Randy's probably thinking. Is there enough room down there in that cul-de-sac for a turnaround for fire department?
At the end of Marlin Lane? Yes.
Oh, you've done that one? Okay.
What 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 square footage are we talking about on these town homes?
He's behind you.
Good evening. I'm Donnie Adams, professional engineer with Adams and Hodge Engineering, three fourteen East Main Street in Clayton. My firm is the planner and engineer on this project. And to answer your question, my understanding, can you hear me? I can't tell if I'm talking into it or not. My understanding is that the town home units are somewhere fourteen fifty, fifteen hundred square feet in that neighborhood. One car garage.
Is the fourteen roughly fourteen plus? Does that is that heated and cooled or does that include your garage?
It is heated and cooled. Let me confirm. Okay.
Right, right. That's what I figured. Okay. And what type of construction are we talking about?
I think we got a picture in here.
Be under single family residential code.
I'm talking, are you doing vinyl or brick veneer? Both? Don't know.
Both. Don't know is a very good answer.
Wendy. Can we mention? Can we mention?
Where's the picture that we said we rent was in here? No, yeah, I was just I was just curious because the other gentleman had a rendering, so. It is it when I read, let's see here. When I read in here, let me find in about the property to be annexed into the town, about how much more property is that? Do we know? I mean, does that include that street that is not in the town of Wilson Smith? Because there's one street that is not in the town, correct? So when I read that that all with that street be included in this?
It's just. Yeah.
Cleaning up where that town limit line goes funny across the property and it's only for what our developer controls or owns.
I can I move with the okay, good. I have a couple of quick questions. On the town council action, item E, shared cost of road improvements proportionally. Can you expand on that for me?
I was going to ask you to do the same thing, but
You're first.
That was one of our concerns and it did come up at the planning board. So yes, at first I wanted to hear. I heard we heard from the planning board, but I wanted to understand what what you guys interpretation and understanding and intentions of both four and five or D and E.
We pretty much go along with whatever, you know, not whatever, but we fall in line with the planning board. So what did they say to you? What was their interpretation?
This is how we got interpreted. So where we are on it, it sounded like the conversation focused around streets and any damage done to the streets and the developer sharing in cost of repairing that. So that's what I want to speak to. We had we had some concerns about that and a couple of different issues. So not sure if this, not sure if you're aware of the street or ridden down the street. This is a street that is that has been in service for somewhere better than twenty-two years now. It's 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 well worn. It's held up well, but it's well worn. It's well into its life cycle. It's at the point where my understanding and discussions within C DOT, this is where the point where the NCDOT would be expecting this to be showing up on the overlay.
But this is not on the NCDOT.
No, 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 I was I was speaking for a frame of reference.
Okay, okay, okay.
From a maintenance standpoint for what you have to do to take care of the streets.
Right.
And just saying that basically this one I've written out and taken a look at it. It's it's served its life. There's a significant amount of alligator cracking and whatnot throughout this this whole project. So.
So maybe what the planning board was suggesting is that if in the construction of this new development, if there is damage done to the point that it cannot be repaired, then maybe you should help share in the cost. Because it is a town on street, so it will call depend on us to repair it. But if your contractors have damaged it to the point that we can't repair it, then should not you share in some of that cost?
So I think some several of the things you say have a lot of validity to them, which is part of the reason we wanted to have a discussion on it. It opens up a big Pandora's box or big can of worms, however you want to say that. Not breaking it down to a specific area. So from my experience and what I've seen over construction projects, there always seems to be a concern about what kind of damage having equip equipment as it's moving in and out is going to do to it. This is on new streets, just constructed in the first months or first year of its life.
Right, I can see that.
And so that 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 construction traffic is usually where you see the places pop up where it had poor subgrade compaction or whatnot. This is past that point. So we're way at the end of it. So we wouldn't anticipate anything showing up. So I blanking it all out there leaves a lot to be to be answered on.
And I can understand where you're coming from because the the street is not new. And so if there is is damage and more than likely there will be because you are bringing in equipment that normally would not be on it. And I don't know how the town council wants to address that, but I know it is a town on street. And so we're eventually going to have to repave it and it's probably going to be on one of our projects for
That's my question there. Is it is it on? Is that street anywhere in the future? Do we have plans for it?
I don't. I don't think we've looked at it.
Well, I think I think, you know, that's 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 a big undertaking for the town. So I think we as a council, we to me, that's very vague, shared shared cost of road improvements proportionally. I mean, you know, what does that mean? That's very vague. I mean, we need to make a decision. You know, you're going to pay so much. We're going to pay so much and and we'll move on if it gets built. I mean, because we 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 as a town council can't say, well, you know what? We're having we're allowing this to be built, but if they tear the road all to pieces, we're going to use your tax dollars to fix what they tore up. Absolutely not.
So I want to hear what you're saying. And as part of the discussion, one other thing to keep in mind as we say that where we're talking about building that, they're already lots. And so they'll be constructed at some point. Different constructions, but still going to be single family residential construction. So the same same loading, the same equipment, the same traffic coming there, individual builders out the zone. So it's and I don't think that council will be holding its builder accountable or making making what use of their road it was and what damage they may have or may not have done. Just because it's coming in. That's where I thought was fair fair discussion. Way into life of this thing, I believe. And I know it's an undertaking to maintain any streets, but I believe that's something that would be town's plans to take care of. If it was a brand, if you'd already done that work and it was overlay, then this discussion is a totally good discussion, I think. That's really easy and really defensible. And you got a beautiful product. Your cut here is just
How many, pardon me, just how many complaints have we had about that street? The condition of the street from the people that ride on it every day?
I I see where Tim's council member Brown's going with that, and I agree with it. If if something is to whatever degree that road is damaged, it's not broken. And with heavy equipment in there, dump trucks and, you know, low boys bringing in trusses and all that stuff. We all agree it's going to go from from damaged to broken. But we don't have any complaints right now, and it's not in it's it's not on our repair horizon. But all of a sudden, it's going to be plopped on our lap and we got to we got to come up with something. I I think this is this is something that, in my opinion, requires one of our engineers to go out and look at and see what the what the extent of it is.
Well, well, it says right here, number D, inspection of all streets before new construction begins. Well, if we're going to have an inspection, then we're going to we should send somebody out there that's going to give us the condition of the road before they start. So, you know, if that road's twenty-two years old and the inspector goes out and there says it's not suitable for heavy duty equipment, then we're going to have to do something about it before we allow heavy duty equipment on it.
Yeah, I agree. That that that.
I mean, if you're going to have an inspection done on the street before it begin before the construction begins, then you should be able to make a conclusion of whether the the vehicles that you and the stuff that you're going to put in there to do it can go on that road safely.
Yeah.
Before, if that inspection is done before they start and the inspector says, hey, this road's not suitable for
Yeah, I agree.
The this kind of work, then we're going to have to do something to make it suitable before we let them people get on it. Is that not true?
I just want to say the S. Um. These individual lots at this time right now, before anything gets done, those individual lots could be built upon, permits could be issued tomorrow. Same trucks going in with the same material on it, doing the same grading and everything on the lots as they would if you rezone it to where it's town homes.
Yeah, I yeah. Well, that's interesting you bring that up.
I need to ask the attorney, could should this be a condition of reason?
It can't be. The developer has to agree to it, and you have to have an understanding of what it entails. And I think the point's been made that it is that you're trying to hold them responsible for sharing the cost of improvements that might be necessitated, even if this rezone doesn't happen. I think that's the point that's being made. So as to its wisdom, I think that's the question.
Can we rezone it and then address this?
It's going to, but it's I see what you're saying, counsel, but it's with with the construction going on, it's going to plop it in our laps sooner, much sooner than later. And I understand that and we'll have to do something and them sharing the cost is is an added benefit to us. But whatever we have to pay is not something we've budgeted for right off the bat. They can. They can build it into the cost of their house and they they're okay with it. But our budget does not show that right now. They're going to they're going to exacerbate the problem. It's a broken road. It's going to be it's a damaged road. It's going to be a broken road. Okay, we have to do something about that. We're going to do it anyway, but now we're having to do it within the next year instead of five years. That's the only, yeah.
He's got nine lots out here.
Yeah.
So if he goes and builds those nine lots individually, he can bring the same equipment.
See, and we would not require that if these nine lots were built by nine different developers, they would be doing the same thing that he's going to do, but we would not.
I fully understand that and I agree with that. I don't have any problem with that. And but what I'm saying is, let's say it's damaged, the road is damaged or to the broken to the damage to the extent that we were going to fix it within three years or five years. Okay, that's that's reasonable and we can budget for that or Powell bill or whatever we put into it. But all of a sudden, with what's going on, we got to do it within two years or a year, and we haven't budgeted for that yet. Sooner rather than later. Yeah, I I understand. And I'm not gonna, I don't think uh my vote is, I'm I'm not gonna hold this thing up. I mean, it's something it's it's sort of, it puts us in a box that I'm not familiar with and that I don't like being put into. But it's something we're gonna have to deal with and then probably go with the flow. I don't care to, but.
One more thing, um if they stay as is, just for your knowledge, they they have the option of building duplexes on each of those lots.
Okay.
Which would be eighteen instead of nine.
Well, I don't wanna be.
I just want everything.
No, I understand, but I don't want to be held held over a barrel on anything like that. And that's what I'm that's what I'm hearing. If we don't do it, they're gonna put duplexes in. Or if we don't do it, they're gonna.
That's not what they said. I just want.
Okay, I'm gonna I'm gonna go for it. I'm gonna go for it. That's my. Can I bring, are you gonna talk about the road again?
No, I I would like for us to look at this as a rezone and take number D and E off the conditions. And let this be something that Wendy and the developer work out. But rezone it without those conditions in it.
Have y'all discussed a percentage amongst you guys on the street stuff, anything at all?
If we take if we take D and E out, there could, the the whole thing could be on on us.
They could work. They could work with Wendy.
It's gonna, yeah, I'd rather have it in here that it's gonna be shared, though.
But there's no, there's no way we can really share it. No.
All right, all right, whatever you want to do. Okay.
Because we are rezoning this to put townhouses.
Okay.
And if we if we try to do it any other way, then we're gonna be penalizing this development.
All right.
Any way you look at it.
I I I'm I'm gonna go along with it. I'm gonna vote I on this thing. I don't have a problem. I wa- I really don't have a big problem with it. It's just a principle. That's all it is. Okay.
No, just want to make sure everybody's heard and and that public hearings closed before.
Okay.
Take action on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, well, we have the developer. Can I ask one more question? The pond behind it. That's very easy access for anybody that's in those townhomes. Is there any fencing up there right now?
Any fence in there?
Okay, that's gonna be that's gonna be a problem with me, Wendy. You know how I am. Um, that even though it's a it's a nice pond and they fish in there and everything else, to me right now, it falls in the same boat, and pardon the 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 usage of that pun. But it falls in the same boat as a uh as a retention pond in another development. In other words, children have access to that. And they can go out there and do whatever they want to do, which sounds really cool, because when we were kids, that was no problem. We don't want to have any drowned children on our watch. That's why in our U D O, when the developer builds a development and they have a retention pond there, before they turn that over to the town, they're required to have a four foot fence all the way around it. Uh, two gates, two keys, police department, fire department, the whole nine yards. It's not gonna keep kids from going over the fence, but it's going to be a a a hindrance or a preventive measure. We just don't want little kids, little toddlers, walking out of a back door and wandering into the pond when nobody's watching. What what do you think about that?
So we've had a bit of discussion on that, and I don't want to get into future stuff, but we do have a project that's that's adjacent, and we've talked about that because this is existing farm pond.
Uh, could you could you turn him up a little bit, Emily, please, or could you speak?
How about I dig into it a little better?
Yes.
Um, so what I was saying is um on the this this project abuts additional property, which will be developed, which we're working on the town, some of that stuff now. We understand, and and this is common through through throughout the area for the retention ponds, stormwater control measures to be fenced in. We do see a difference with it being an existing farm pond, um which this is and which there are so some others on the adjacent side as well that are in amenity. And so we are doing our planning around that to be able to make it park space, open space, and real usable. And that fencing has a tendency to break that down. I'm not saying that there's not a perfect way to do that, but it that that would be my concern on the.
Okay, well, on these townhomes, will there be privacy fences in the back? Or is that up to the owners?
Yep. Yep, it's not on this reason.
So individual owners, that's what.
Yeah, the uh.
Okay, we have a we have a property owner that wants to speak.
This gentleman is nervous about this because he says that his English is not really good, but I think he's got this. Okay. Just state your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Alberto, and I live in ninety eight, whatever you wait. So I'm uh the owner of the property. I'm in the front of the pound. So what I hear in uh here, what I hear here is you're gonna build in a townhouse, do a sodia. So uh the first thing I live in there for two years, and I like the neighborhood. I come in for uh San Diego, California, a long time ago. Uh, because they were a big city, you know, and there are noise, uh and it's more danger for kids. So I like here because it's very quiet and light up. I don't hear anybody shooting a gun in there. And I saw the police officer making turns around and and I feel safety in me and my kids. So I had three kids, and uh the first thing we saw it to like to buy the property was they're very happy to see the pound because we see the goose going in there. We see the deers in the morning. And uh we we like to see the nature. So uh if they do the townhomes, we can't see anything. I'm gonna see just colors in there, siding that we're gonna see. And also, that little road is is too little for be crowded in there. And also, I don't, like you're saying, I hear is they damaged, and they're trying to fix it. How can I get out of my house? How can I get inside my house? And I'm in the front of the road. And it's uh that's my concern about it.
Where did you say you live?
Uh ninety eight, whatever you wait, it's just just in front of the pound.
Okay.
I I can understand, and I sympathize with how you feel. I I moved down here into a development, and right out my back door was a hundred acres of of beautiful farmland and trees, and now it's populated by houses right up against mine. I just have to live with it. It's progress. What can I say? But I do sympathize with you.
But most of the time, it's like a one story.
Yeah.
Not two story. You don't see anything. So at least you go and you dig, and you can see still see a tree. And I'm gonna see nothing at all.
Yeah.
So that's my concern. And I would like uh more people coming like my neighbors, but I think it looks like maybe I'm the only one on here. So but uh just wanna talk to you about it, what I feel, and thank you for letting me know.
Thank you. Thank you for speaking.
I appreciate it. And I want to say I like I like very much Wilson Mills, nice town. And that's that's what I only that's what I wanna.
And we're happy to have you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I close the public hearing. What is the recommendation of council?
Before we make the uh uh motion on this, I think we do need to do away with D and E.
Yes, if you um if you would like to remove any of the conditions, you can simply make make your motion and and list the conditions that you would like to include, exclude those you don't want.
Is this last paragraph?
Right, and paragraph G is not shouldn't be a condition. It should be um made part of your motion if you if you agree with it.
What's the pleasure of the council?
J C is pointing to me. Stand by. All right, I make a motion that we uh we approve the rezone from S F R three to M U parentheses C Z mixed use conditional rezone with the approval uh of the conditions as stated with the exception of paragraph D and paragraph E. And that this uh reason that this rezone is consistent with the town's adopted comprehensive land use and master plan, as well as the future land use map and the town's unified development ordinance. This rezone is reasonable and meets all the criteria of these items.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Trippett made the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I opened the public hearing for the ordinance to amend the Wilson Mills Code of Ordinance, section four dash forty. This is pertaining to the chickens and the roosters. If I understand this correct, Wendy, the first one we have is the changes. And the second one we have is the way it would read after the changes. Does anybody have any question about what this ordinance changes will do? It's taking away the uh special use permit.
Let's knock the uh license down to half.
Be a be a hundred dollars on it, Wendy, instead of five hundred, getting the special use five hundred?
A hun- special uses five hundred.
And so this would just make, this would make it a hundred.
Yeah.
I never thought that I'd be here talking about chickens. It it and and I understand that this is a it's a big problem in in town. Are are they are they just free ranging all over town? Or, I mean.
Pretty much, yeah.
Is there no way that we we can get uh somebody to pick them up and have a big big picking or chicken picking or something? I mean.
We have a lot of people that are trying to hide coops behind their barns. Um, but you know, they're there. You can hear the chickens. You can hear the roosters, the neighbors hear it. Um, they do get out. They do free range. Some people think they should let them free range all the time. Um, and it's hard to enforce making them get rid of them. Because in order to go in and take their chickens, there's a lot of steps with that. And the one thing that I've heard from a lot of residents recently is the way the the price of everything is going up, a lot of people are getting chickens. They're using the eggs. When the chickens stop laying, they use the chickens as meat. So it's a resource for their family as well.
And Tim, you may not think about it, but when I was in the planning department, I had a woman come to town hall, and she said, I'm tired of having chicken all over my car and my back porch because my neighbor is letting his chickens just run free. I mean, I don't have that problem, but there are people that do.
I don't want chickens in my neighborhood. I mean, I I if I do, I want to go to the food line and get it. But I mean, I I do, I mean, I I I I sympathize with the folks in these neighborhoods who don't want chickens, and everybody else's chickens are going on their property, doing their business or whatever.
Yeah.
And keeping them up. And and I I don't see how, if we can't enforce what we have, how we can enforce no roosters. I don't know if they're if they're not getting a permit now, how are they gonna get? What what in other words, if we change something, what what is it gonna do for the person who doesn't have chickens?
When we go to someone now that does have chickens, and we tell them, if you want to keep your chickens, you're gonna have to complete a special use permit, go before the planning board, go before the town council. It's gonna cost you five hundred dollars. They move that chicken coop somewhere that we can't see it from the road. If we say, if you want to keep your chickens, it's a one hundred dollar permit as long as you keep them inside. And most of the owners that I have spoken with are in favor of getting rid of their roosters. A lot of them don't want roosters anyway, but you go to tractor supply and buy biddies. You don't always know what you're getting until they get older. Um, most of the people I have spoken with that already have them, they're okay with no roosters. They're okay with having a limit to the number of hens they can have. They're okay with paying the hundred dollars. They're not okay with paying five hundred dollars. I'm only relaying what I've been.
And I don't blame me. Five hundred dollars is is excessive. I mean, I I think it is, but.
The reason it was put in its five hundred dollars because at the time our council did not want chickens, and they thought if they put it high enough that people would have them, but that's not what's happening.
What what what's the magic number ten? Where did that come from?
It's just an average number.
I pulled up what a lot of the surrounding towns have. And ten seem to be the magic number, ten to twelve seem to be the magic number for what the ones that do allow them. Um, what they allow, and the majority of the ones around us do allow chickens now. In a coop, only hens, no roosters. So it would put us in line with some of the ones around us.
Is there anybody here that want to speak on this for the public hearing on the chickens? Does anyone have any more questions for?
When when you find uh free range hens, we do we do anything with them now? They're supposed to keep them in the coop, are they not?
They are.
Does anybody pick them up?
If we can catch them.
Have we picked any up?
Not since the day I was running in the rain with the dress on to catch chickens that were out and about. Ever since then, no, sir, I've not chased any.
Did anybody video that for us?
No.
No, okay. Sergeant Ray, have you uh been out chasing hens at all? Okay, all right, very well. So Wendy, do you think that by putting this, I'm not worried about the money part. That's that's agreeable to me. By putting this thing on there about saying they've got to be, they've got to be a hand or hand, they've got to be penned, that that it's going to take the free range aspect of this out, or they're gonna continue?
It'll give us a little more bite as far as trying to enforce it, because right now, if we go to somebody, it's either get rid of your chickens or pay five hundred dollars.
Okay.
If they're roaming all over everywhere, right now, it's get rid of your chickens.
Okay.
Whereas if we do this, it can be coop your chickens and only pay a hundred.
Do you know the uh the chicken owners in Wilson's Mills? Pretty much all of them?
Um, definitely not all of them.
Okay, but you've got a good feel for it. I'm I'm okay with this. Um, we'll do the best we can, I guess, to to keep them.
We need to close the public.
Yeah, we'll do that in a bit. I'm just I'm voicing an opinion is all I'm doing.
Okay.
You know me.
Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. What is the pleasure of council?
I make a motion that we uh approve the ordinance change allowing chickens in town limits with the conditions and permits as presented.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Journey consecutive. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? At this time.
I just want on the chicken thing. Wendy, thank you for chasing that them chickens in that dress where they're pouring down rain. I, you know, people don't understand that that you do more than just sit in the office now, but I we appreciate that.
I'd have paid big money to have that video. Big money.
My husband said the same thing. That was um before Mr. Moore was hired, and that was when I was wearing quite a few different hats at the time.
At this time, we will open the open forum at seven forty. Anyone wishing to address council, please come forward, state your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. No one wishing to come forward. I'll close the open forum. And this past month, I have not been very busy. It's Christmas and New Year's. I've only attended one meeting. It's Christmas and New Year's. I've only attended one meeting. Uh, but we did have our mayor's meeting and we are getting a lot of information. That addresses some of the things that are going on in the county and I appreciate the cooperation that the mayors are showing each other and the interest they have in the municipalities around, so. I will keep you informed on things that I learn as we go. And then we have a proclamation. Do I need to read this? Wendy, do I need to read it all the way? Okay. Proclamation declaring February twenty twenty-three as all in red month in the town of Wilson Mills. Whereas the well being of our community is of paramount importance and maintaining excellent health among our citizens is a top priority. February marks the one month countywide health heart health awareness campaign entitled All in Red. Presented by Johnson Health and AMRAK and organized by the Johnston Health Foundation. And whereas in the United States, North Carolina and Johnston County, heart disease is the leading cause of death among men and women. And whereas heart disease and stroke rate among the five top five health priorities in Johnston County per the twenty nineteen Johnston County Community Health Needs Assessment Implementation Plan. And whereas per the Center of Disease Control and Prevention, about eighty percent of deaths from premature heart disease and stroke could be prevented by changes in physical activity, diet, education. Main main management of common medical conditions and whereas All in Red is an opportunity to increase heart health awareness while addressing the growing needs of local heart patients. And whereas the All in Red campaign invites all Johnston County residents, business owners and visitors to participate in this incentive by wearing red on February the third, twenty twenty-three National Wear Red Day and on running a red promo or fundraiser in February. And whereas the financial challenges of a heart patient are enormous. All fundraised within this campaign period will benefit local heart patients throughout the Johnson Health Foundation Heart Fund. And whereas on this day, we recognize heart disease and stroke survivors who's battling the disease, their families who are their source of love and encouragement and applaud the efforts of our medical professionals who provide quality care. And now therefore, the Honorable Fleeter Bird and the town Wilson Mills Town Council do hereby proclaim February twenty twenty-three is All in Red Month and encourage businesses, industries and citizens in the community to support and participate in this event. I think it's a wonderful cause. And now we will hear from our town administrator, Ms. Lee Anne.
Right. Um, do not have anything to report in particular. I did do the legislative goal statements. By the deadline, I only heard back from one of you as far as anything further than what we talked about last month. Um, so I did get those submitted and I'll report back to you whenever they let us know what the league will be lobbying for this this year. Tomorrow morning, I'll be attending the Triangle East Chambers Annual Meeting at the Medical Mall. And that's all I have near.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sherry? Our financial report.
Evening, counsel. In your packets, you have the December finance report. Do you have any questions, comments or concerns? I'd like to say that the auditor will be here um next month to give us an overview of our our audit for twenty-one, twenty-two. It went to the LGC, the LGC only had one question for him. I mean, which pertain like a yes or a no answer in his submission of the audit itself. And so he resubmitted it, they um approved it with absolutely no questions again this year, so it's awesome.
Thank you.
Very proud of that.
Thank you.
But he will be here next week, I mean, excuse me, next month to make his presentation.
Okay, very good. Very good. Ms. Wendy, you're back up again.
Um, the planning department staff report was included with your packet tonight. Um, we have had success on sending out letters for abandoned cars and nuisance cars. We have had quite a few that the owners have voluntarily towed. So far, we've not had to do any of those. Um, Mill Creek again and um cottages are both pretty much built out. We're just waiting for them to finish the infrastructure. There was some issues at cottages they have to fix before they can request final inspection. Um, the other stuff, we're just sort of waiting to roll right on along. Just this week, Crescent Meals has had their phases one, two and three approved and they have submitted four, five and six. So they are rolling along and their number of homes has increased to nine hundred.
Is it because they are reorganizing lots?
They've reorganized some, they're still okay on open space. Um, Brian has checked behind me on all the stormwater stuff. Everything else is still in line. Ashton Woods has recently purchased that from Greenfield Communities and their um guidelines are just a little bit different and I think that's how they got those extra lots in there.
Nine hundred homes.
Nine hundred homes, town homes and single family.
How's that impact the water and sewer over there?
They're already up.
They're putting in stuff now.
Yeah, they're they're cutting in roads right now. They're getting ready to start installing infrastructure, but remember, this is the subdivision that is upsizing all of their lines anyway, so everything north of them should be able to flow through Crescent Meals. So they'll they will be fine with with their sewer.
Is and and I think I asked you this one time, Wendy, and I can't remember what you told me, but the the parcel between uh Crescent Meals and Swift Creek Road on the Wilson's Mill side. That they logged at one time was supposed to be developed and um it's grown back up now. If you come in, if if you if well, if if you go like normal people would down Swift Creek Road and cross over seventy, turn right on Strickland Road. When you get past the residential area, there's open land there that was logged on the right.
Mm-hmm.
What's it does that have a name on here or anything?
No, not on here. Um, that parcel is actually up for sale again. There's a lot of interest in that parcel. I've been contacted by several developers. Most of it residential, one or two mixed use things, but nothing in con in stone.
Anyone else have any, anyone else have any questions for Wendy? Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for everything you do.
Um, we're starting our farmer's market in April, that's same update as last month, but the only update since last month is that we have returning as well as new vendors this year, so we're really getting the word out and it seems to be helping. Um, I'm trying to follow up as we get closer to April, follow up more often. We've sent out reminder letters, reminder emails, as well as the initial applications in September. Um, but I think now that the holidays are over, some people are, you know, clearing out the Christmas cards and everything else and they've kind of stumbled upon our application. Um, I had someone email me today saying if we were still accepting, so we are, spread the word and concession trucks as well, food trucks, so.
Uh, we are gonna have it at the park.
We're gonna have it at the park this May.
And our our vendors or the old vendors are.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, with that.
Mm-hmm. And I'm sending out an email probably beginning of February, mid February with everybody that signed up. Um, but anybody can participate and become a vendor anytime during the season.
Right.
So.
Okay, next up is police department and since chief in here.
Evening.
Good evening.
Yes, chief's out of town and lieutenant's out of town, so you guys are stuck with me.
That sounds good.
Okay, so I'm sure you guys have the annual report in front of you. Start with any questions?
Yes, 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 yes. Let me get to it.
It is very detailed.
It's been a busy year.
Yes.
I just want to point out that I've been here for two and a half years now, just about, and I've seen quite a bit of growth. Shocking, actually, coming from a very, very high volume police department up north down here to where you might get a call one night, you might not. It really has. I mean, if if you look at the stats here, in the last year, we've had a two hundred and thirty-one point six percent increase in dispatched calls. That's really unbelievable growth. And just about everything is uh is doubled or more. Uh, so it's been a very busy year and the officers have been doing tremendous job, really proud of all.
Yeah, sorry, my only comment, I I gotta, I do have a couple of quick questions, but I do want to commend the department and you and the chief. It's a you've done a great job. I'm I'm so proud of our department and I still think we've raised the bar high and other departments are looking at us and trying to do the same things. They're they're reactive, we're proactive.
Absolutely.
And I'm happy with everything. Let's let's go over to the the LESO program.
Yes.
The law enforcement support office. I understand we got these things acquired at no cost. Let me ask you straight up front, item number eight and item number nine, what do we need? And a thirty-one foot rigid inflatable boat for and the trailer to carry it?
That's the question, isn't it? So.
Yeah, we the waterfront property we have, we just discussed it, it's over there in Johnson Farm.
Well, um, considering that these items were, you know, acquired at no cost, I think the 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 thinking here was that number one, our ETJ does bump up against the Noose River.
Right.
Um, in the event of, you know, emergency storms, not to mention that the town is growing and we we may be along the Noose River at some point, but um to have this equipment, which is rare to be able to acquire for nothing. It would be, you know, to our benefit to to get it and to have it. Eventually train some people on water rescue so that in the event there is a tragic. And I think when I first started here, there was a was in this area here, but there was a a mom and some kids that that ended up in the noose and all the all the neighboring departments were out trying to assist in that type of a situation. I think, you know, all you need is one situation like that, you save a kid or a person makes having this worth it.
Where where are we going to store that, though? It's it's thirty-one foot rigid boat.
Yes, so my understanding is that it's gonna be stored at the PD. In the back.
I'm sorry, the.
At the PD.
The current one.
Yeah, and then I guess at some point probably we'll be moving somewhere else and that's where we go. We would keep it on our facility. I don't know.
And it'll it'll be on the the trailer, the boat master trailer.
That's correct. The trailer needs some modifications that we're doing ourselves, be able to to house the boat, but that's, yeah, that's the plan.
Is there an engine or do we have to get all the part timers out there to paddle?
No, there is, there is an engine.
Okay, cool. All right. Um, the other question, let me go down that list real quick and and we have a four thousand pound tow behind John Deere Heating, Air Conditioning and Electrical Power Generator.
Yes, that's correct.
What would we use that for?
That's something I don't have an answer for you. Again, some of these things, they become available and Lieutenant, you know, he 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 goes over the stuff on a daily basis.
I I understand the the speakers, the red dots, the magazines and all of that stuff, but when you get into some of that stuff. Gator four wheel ATVs, okay, I can understand that, I guess, and but I'm looking at the maintenance and storage also. That's gonna be another budget item and the last one would be the dumbbell set.
Yeah, I mean, one of our goals is to is to set up a gym at some point in your future, so we've been kind of acquiring some little uh bits in these of these equipment, that that's that's the goal is to be able to give officers some gym time.
Okay, that answers all my questions.
And I I think the generator would probably be fitted probably to run PD if the power went out or town hall, whatever.
Yeah.
And 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 the the four wheeled ATVs, I think I I like those because of the park.
Right.
Um, and it expanded. I mean, it'd be so much easier when the when the events grow to have that that ATV out there than than a police car, so I have a question for you. Does does anybody own on our department certified to inspect baby seats for our citizens?
Okay, so we have traffic officer Deese, he I'm don't don't put me through this exactly, but I believe his certification expired recently and he's gonna go back and recertify and I believe Sergeant Pedan's gonna do it along with him. He's gonna be our go-to person for the baby seat certifications. I'm I'm pretty sure it expired and he's scheduled to go recertify, so.
Yeah, I mean, when I had mine, you just threw it in there. When I when I was little, you just climbed in the backseat and walked around, but um, but I think, you know, they're they're more strict now and you guys can write a citation for it.
Right.
But for our town folks, you know, if they don't have anybody that they could call the PD, say, hey, can you come check this before you pull me over and and give me a a little gift? That that that's good to know.
Yeah, absolutely, hundred percent.
Because I don't think our hospitals offer that service.
Right.
When they when when they take a kid home, so. And the the trucks or the trucks letter, have we got the trucks letter yet?
They are being done now.
Are you gonna wrap the gators?
I I don't know. Maybe just leave them green.
I think they look really cool, blue lights up.
Does anyone else have anything?
No.
I just wanted to say thank you and thank all of the officers for all your work. We appreciate it very much. And I know sometime you go unthanked, but know that we are very proud of our police department.
Appreciate that.
And all the work that you do.
Thank you, appreciate that very much. And I also want to say that having worked in law enforcement for such a long time, it is refreshing. And I am very thankful that we have a town council who supports the police department. It's unfortunately not the norm, so thank you.
Okay, Mr. Moore.
Let's have my report, any questions? And by the way, that boat is nineteen foot.
I thought it said thirty-one foot.
It's a nineteen foot. It says thirty-one, but it's nineteen foot.
A nineteen foot boat.
We got cheated then. Well, but are we are we looking to get an engine also for this thing?
The boat already has it already has motor.
What what?
It's got a motor.
It has a motor on it.
It's got one on it?
Yes, sir.
Does anybody have any questions for Patrick?
The cameras, the cameras are all up. I should have asked Sergeant Sergeant Ray about that, but the cameras are up, you helped put them up and they're all functioning.
Um, we have a meeting with the two engineers Friday. It's coming up Friday, uh, to hook up the last two cameras. We had to change the wire on two of them to a CAT six, which is an ethernet instead of a coax.
Okay.
So we just had to change that and they're going to hook them up Friday.
Okay. Um, you say you do a walkthrough with Wendy at, at Mill Creek. Mill Creek is, which one is Mill Creek again?
Next to the park.
Oh, right next to the park, right. That's, that's not the official walkthrough for the acceptance, is it? Okay. Are they growing weeds out of their sewers like they are behind me?
Uh, I don't think so. Were they? No.
Actually, it's probably soybean behind me. Pardon me?
But they've not unplugged those yet. And we do have, we're working with community service guys right now. We have a few all working right now.
Now, when they unplug them, I guess this is for Wendy too, when they unplug those things, I mean, those plugs are not, those things are full, I think. Are they not? How will they, how will they clean them out? I'm curious.
Most time with a jetter. They'll jet them out or, and flush the, the pipes out and everything.
Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions for Patrick? Thank you, Patrick. Does any councilman have any, any comments?
Have any type of update on sewer? Have we got anything in your meetings or with the county, like, are they on schedule or do we know?
You, are you referring to the agreement with, with us?
Uh, more like the new facility with the county where we're going to get new sewer allotment and stuff like that. And so just the construction over on, at the landfill?
Um, at their commissioner's meeting last month, they gave the water and wastewater plan, which included information about the new building. Is that what you're asking about? Okay.
But I mean, they're, they're still on track and all, I mean, for completion.
Yes. Yes. Sorry.
Your question, Madam Mayor, was, does any council member have any comments? And I do have a comment and it's something that I've been thinking about for a long time. Um, I'm, I'm a softie at heart. You all know that. But when I, when I, I, I go to bed quite late, but long, most, most nights around eight, nine o'clock, I like to go and get a treat, even though I've had an ice dinner. I go get a little snack. But you know, kids do that too. And that's the focus of my comments. Um, I'm con, I'm very concerned that there is not enough being done for the children in Wilson's Mills. And I'm speaking not of just all the children. I'm speaking of the, the, uh, the deprive, deprive, yeah, they're deprived children that don't have what most other children have. We don't see it, uh, as we drive through Wilson's Mills. You guys see it, fire trucks, when you go places, you see it all the time. Sergeant Ray, your guys see it everywhere. And, and I haven't asked, but I know darn well that both police and fire department are doing something kind of on the side if they see something. And I'm sure it comes out of their pockets and nobody ever says anything. That's just who you guys are. Um, but I think with us growing like this, I know there's kids out there that are coming to school probably wearing flip flops in January. And it's not because they live in the South and they can handle that. It's because they don't have the shoes. They don't have the coats, those sorts of things. And you hear, you hear about the drives once a year, get coats for the kids. I just think Wilson's Mills needs to do something a little bit more. Some would say that's why we have a social services department within Johnston County. But I am certain they are overwhelmed with the problems throughout the county and it's a big, big county. And they can't focus. So I think it, it falls upon municipalities to perhaps sit back and take a, take another look at it. Uh, and that is, I, 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 I get heartbroken thinking about kids that would like to have a little snack before they go to bed. And they don't. So they go to bed hungry, even though they've had a little bit to eat. They go to bed hungry. Um, and that bothers me terribly. I'll tell you what my grandson called it. He was, uh, he's, I have four of them, but the one of them, our favorite one, Emily, Emily Levi. Uh, he's a middle child like me. And when he's, he's ten now, but when he was six and seven and he'd come spend weekends with my wife and I, he would ask if he could have and get this, this is his phrase and I, and it sticks with us. He called it night breakfast. And he would have a snack. And it was usually a small bowl of cereal or something like that, or if we had some coffee cake, he'd have a piece of that or whatever. But he called it night breakfast for whatever reason. And that is, that sticks with my wife and I. And, and Levi still says it now, but um, I, I think we need to do something. And here's my thinking on this. I don't want to take all night. Police Department, Fire Department, churches and the school need to get together and, and identify these kids. Not identify them and put a label on them and say you belong in that group, but identify them as they're going to need some help. And we need to do something to make sure that those kids get that help. I know there's a lot of parents that need help too. They have the, the ability to, to rectify that situation. The kids don't. And oftentimes the parents are doing things that take things away from the kids, money that would be used for whatever. We don't have a food bank here in Wilson's Mills. The churches do. Most of the churches have their own food bank. Am I correct?
Several of them do.
Several of them do. But they're all individuals and most of them, um, I would say do that for their parishioners. But not for people that don't attend that particular church. Where do those people go? And I don't know where they go. Why can we not get a council, a Wilson's Mills Council of Churches together? There's what, twelve churches in Wilson's Mills? Why can we not get them together with Leanna, the mayor, the chief and, and Bentley Powell or, or somebody in the fire department? And let's see what we can do to maybe come up with a, a community food bank, a source of, you know, clothing. And I know that takes room. We, we're going to have that room soon, I hope. And we can do those sorts of things. I don't have an answer for any of this. I really don't. I'm just laying the problem out and, and telling you how it hurts. And what can we do about it?
I think maybe, um, the chief had the first meeting with the pastors of the local churches. And I think maybe if we had another one and addressed this, I think that that would probably be good. Isn't that part of our strategic plan?
It is. And when we met with the, um, um, our goal was to meet at least twice a year. So we're looking for another meeting in the spring and we can.
I, I don't have the answers. I really don't. That's, that's pastors might have answers. Um, the chief might, if, if he puts it out to, you know, you Sergeant and, and the officers at your next meeting, some of them will have stories. And I'll bet you every one of them can take me out in the car right now and go that house, that house and that house, correct? And it's not, they're, not that they're always getting calls at those houses, but they just know their community and they know somebody in that house needs some help. And let's, I'd like to see us do that. Call it Operation Night Breakfast, for lack of a better term. But I think that explains all of it. It's, it's a little thing at night, but you know, the school takes care of them for lunches and breakfast. I understand that.
But they, there's a lot of the students that, um, don't get free lunches now because that, part of that's been taken out. And so our church particularly is furnishing money to pay for those that do not have lunches. And a lot of, a lot of the churches are helping in that way. But this is something I think that we could, when we meet again with the chief and he gets this meeting together of the pastors, maybe we can get something started. And this would be a good project for our ministers of the community to do. And I think it'd be something they would be interested in. Yes, and we need that. So we will, I will talk with chief and Leanna can too, and we'll see if we can get something started.
Thank you. Levi will say thank you too.
Anyone else have anything to say? I have something. I want to say thank you to my town council. You are working together. You are complimenting each other. And you are looking at the betterment of our community. And I want to thank you all for that because without us working together, we can't accomplish anything. And so I just want to say thank you. Do I have, wait, we've got to open the second public forum. So I opened the second public forum at eight ten, Leanna. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. Get your name, your address. Limit your comments to three minutes. I closed the public forum. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Councilman Jernican made the motion to adjourn. Councilman Gowen seconded it. All in favor? Thank y'all.